Good morning, everyone. I want to call our November 30, 2016, open meeting to order and would ask you to please all rise and join me for a moment of silent reflection. First off, I would ask if any member would like to declare pecuniary interests now or elsewhere in the meeting. To do so now, seeing none, okay. Mr. Cribs, could I turn to you, please, for rise and report? Motions of the in-camera session.
You can indeed, Warden, although there's nothing to report at this time.
Thank you very much. Before we get into our regular agenda this morning, council, it is my pleasure to introduce to all of you formally and to our community who is joining us here today, our new chief cultural officer, Mr. Andrew Meyer, who has joined the County of Lampton from a neighbouring municipality, and I know that you are going to enjoy our cultural service area here and would like to welcome you on behalf of the members of council. So now, moving into our regular agenda, we have a delegation this morning, and I'm looking first for council to pass a motion to permit the presenters pass the bar. Move by councillor Gillis, second by councillor Cook. All in favour? Thank you. So I would ask Ms. Sim, Vicky Prahl, and Christine Bregman to come forward over here, and we'll get you set up, please.
... opportunity to be here today to give you the latest update on some of the activities that we've been taking part in. I'm very happy to have Vicky Prahl and Chris Bregman with me this morning to answer questions, if you have any questions, in detail that I possibly, being new to the area, would not know. So we'll start right ahead with the presentation. I understand that you have had this presentation, so I'm going to go through the slides pretty quickly. Again, our mission is to attract visitors, increase stay, spend more dollars, and have the experience of Lampton County. We also want to bring visitors back a second time. Our vision, I won't read that, it's pretty straightforward, our strategic goals is to lead and assist in tourism partner development. We'll talk a little more about that as the presentation goes on. Establish a unified brand and grow awareness of Lampton County, and grow sustainable long-term funding for our organisation. Who is our visitor? Well, visitors are defined by people who travel at least a minimum of 40 kilometres to our area. So here's some of our key markets. First is our families, which is important, nature lovers, which we have a lot of product to supply, knowledge seekers. Now, these are 55-plus seniors who have a higher income, and outgoing mature couples, they are the 60-plus crowd. Here's some of our key experiences, which I'm sure most of you are well aware of, beaches, our sports, our arts and culture, and all-around family fun. We also do wine and dine, on-the-farm experiences, entertainment, and travel in style. Here's some of our marketing. Right now, this is our experience guide, it's on sale right now for 2017, Chris is in charge of that. We print 55,000 copies of that and 45 of them out. Here's some of the ads that we placed this year in print media. Again, you can see a lot of sports, a lot of outdoor. This is, here's three campaigns that were done in partnership with Ontario Southwest, or the South Western Ontario Tourism Organisation. These campaigns, these three campaigns drove over half a million visitors, new visitors, to their website. Sarnia Lampton is part of all of those three campaigns. Again, digital marketing is growing with us, and it is growing with the younger crowd for sure. Our website is the hub for all of our digital marketing, whether it's Instagram, Facebook, or blogging, videos, and our e-newsletter that we distribute to over 2,000 consumers. Travel media. Travel media is something that we focus on. We bring writers and bloggers into Sarnia Lampton to experience what we have. They go back, they write stories, or they blog about it. That third-party endorsement is quite an influencer on people who are looking to buy trips. Group travel. Again, motor coach, the industry's changed vastly over the last few years, but we're still seeing, about 60 motor coaches have come in this year. Staff just met with 20 new companies in October with sit-down sales meetings to bring more buses our way. Again, sports tourism, there's a number of events that are happening and will be coming over the next few months. Festivals and events, that's very important, that's a key demand generator for this area. Again, this is some of the things we're working on for next year. This is Foam Fest, which I understand is coming, it looks like a lot of fun. TSL in Action, now, that's our assembly room, it's empty right now. We're planning on renting this out as a revenue generator. So hopefully, next year, when we show this picture, it'll be full of people. Product development. We are working on a strategy in partnership with a South Western Ontario Tourism Organisation to build more itineraries and to link more people together, more routes, and you'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. Partnerships. This is Kyle, our social media fellow, at the Zoomer Show in Toronto. We're also, over the next couple of months, we will be appearing at the motorcycle shows in Toronto and in Cleveland in partnership with the Ontario Southwest Group. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sim. Councillor, do you have any questions for our presenters this morning? Councillor McGugan.
Yeah, thank you ever so much, and thanks for the information. I've got a couple of comments. One is, what is the gross revenue of the visitors that come? And do we have any way of tracking? Are there repeats? Do they keep coming back to look at other parts of our county? And I say thanks, and we do have to keep working at it because we've got the best spot in North America to bring tourists to.
Ms. Sim, go ahead.
I think it's important to understand that collecting stats is not a perfect science. I'm not saying we don't collect stats, but I can tell you from what we do collect, we gave out about, I'd say about 15,000 packages this year to newcomers and people coming to the area for sports tournaments. As far as having accurate, up-to-date how the summer was, we can tell from the accommodation sector how busy they were, campgrounds, how busy they were, but we don't have any hard facts to this day. Sorry about that.
Follow-up, councillor McGugan.
What's the gross dollars? A few years ago, it was 300 million that came in, and then tapered off during the tough times of '08 and '09. So do we know where we are today?
As we were always able to give you the tourism revenues through Stats Canada. Stats Can since 2013 has no longer, is no longer collecting the tourism stats for the individual counties. Now they're collecting the stats for the regions. So we're part of RTO1, and from the statistics from RTO1, there has been increase in tourism visitors and expenditures, but we can't break it down straight to the county anymore because Stats Can doesn't do that anymore. So we have been collecting data through our website visits, and if you look at our AGM report, which I believe we're going to give everyone a copy of, you'll see the increase in visitations, there'll be an increase in the number of visitations from one event, from an event from 2013 to 2014. So we are seeing an increase. We're also seeing an increase in the revenues from all our hotels, campgrounds, bed and breakfasts. So that's an indication to us that obviously the tourism is increasing year after year, but unfortunately Stats Can isn't providing us anymore with the county numbers, it's all South Western Ontario.
Councillor Gillis, and then councillor Bradley.
Thank you, Warden, and members of county council. With regard to cycling tourism, have you seen an uptick on that considering the fact that you have had two major events here, I think, over the summertime that were very well received?
Part of the new product development. So last year, we hosted the Great Waterfront Trail Adventure, and we had 150 cyclists from across Canada come to that event, and actually, the warden was part of that. She was a trooper, she cycled from Pele Island to Grand Bend. And then we also hosted the Grand Fonda, which was an international event. We had capped it at 500 cyclists, but unfortunately, I guess, the website kept taking registrations, so when we woke up in the morning, we had actually 530. So we went over our goal. This year, we're looking at bringing 750 cyclists from across Canada and the US. We had people coming from Kanloops, BC, Quebec, and into the US. So we're looking at an increase in that as well. And both those cycling events took place throughout Lampton County, so the Great Waterfront Trail Adventure followed our waterfront all the way up to Grand Bend, and the Grand Fonda went into the county through Arcona and back to Micra Park.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes, and one of the biggest, if not the biggest, growth in tourism development is accessibility, disability tourism. And a number of years ago, probably three, four years ago, it was my impression from talking to Marlene Wood at the time, that TSL would take the lead on that, because it is a growth business, aging population, you know, all those things. I didn't see recognition of that in the document here, and I just wonder where you're at on opening up that market, which is huge across North America.
To do that, we are actually recognised throughout South Western Ontario and the rest of the province as being the leader in starting the accessibility programme for the tourism partners. We continue to work with our partners, encouraging them to make their facilities accessible, and we know that it's a huge market that we will continue to grow.
It's important to acknowledge that in future publications, because it's a question that comes up constantly when people are trying to look at coming to communities, as you know, whether it be cruise boats, or hotels, or restaurants, and you know some of the efforts that have gone on in Sarnia, which are our leadership efforts. But I do think it's important that when people see this, that they know it's here. And I do know you've done a lot of good work in that area, I just think you need to show that, too.
Is there any other questions from council this morning? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation this morning, ladies. Next up then, council, is item number eight, A, adoption of minutes of the open session and closed section dated November 2, 2016. Looking for a motion, councillor Broad, seconded by councillor Bruzwick. Any questions? All in favour? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Next up, we have correspondence under item A. We have a recommendation around an email from one of our citizens from North Lampton, Elizabeth Davis Stagg, and an email and correspondence back from our planning director, Dave Pozliff, with a recommendation to council, and I would look to you for your direction on that. Deputy Warden Veen.
I can make motion to receive and file.
Yes, okay, thank you. Seconded by councillor Cook. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favour? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, next, we will go to reports requiring a motion. First up, we have, councillor, would you like to deal with these separately, and deal with item A first, or would you like to move them as A and B together? I'll look for a motion. Councillor Arnold.
Move the strategic file first.
Okay, seconded by councillor Gillis. Discussion. Okay. And that's to receive and file. All in favour? Opposed?
With the recommendation.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. And the second one is regarding the CAO's goals and objectives, and he has provided a report that looks, discusses the two years behind with a look ahead, and that motion is to receive the recommendation, or the report from the CAO. Could I look for a motion there? Moved by councillor Hand, seconded by deputy warden Veen. Any discussion? All in favour? Opposed? That motion is carried also. Okay, now we're into our committee minutes. I will turn to the morning committee chair, councillor Weaver, to present your day's minutes, please.
Morning, thank you, Warden. I would like to present for council's consideration the committee AM meetings of November 16.
Okay, thank you. Number one. Two. Four. Councillor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden McDougall, and just want to thank county staff, as well as all the members of the public that have inputted into the drafting of the current draft of the county official plan. Did a lot of consultations since 2011, and that goes back to when I was the warden, so that's when it all started, which was a good thing to do, because the other document from '98 needed to be updated. Well, I believe now it's council's turn. And with that, I would like to table motion number four until we get a review by our local councils, and we also strike a committee of county council comprised of one member from each of the geographical areas with a final recommendation to county council on February 1, 2017.
Seconded by councillor Napper. So that is to table it until...
February 1, 2017.
Thank you very much. Okay, so all in favour? Opposed? Okay. For all of our people in the gallery today then, the motion now directs through council the draft to date to our local councils, and it will come back to county council on February 1, 2017. Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Arnold.
Madam Warden, if I may, after the conclusion of this council meeting, we could meet as different geographical areas to strike the committee and the membership thereof, and we would do that today, and I would also assume that the new warden and the new deputy warden will be involved in that committee, as well as our members of planning staff.
Okay. And if I could, councillor Arnold then, were you intending that anything come through committee or directly back to council on February 1?
Anything to do with the official plan at this point would come back through this strike, this committee that we're going to strike, and then they will make the final recommendation to county council to be voted on on February 1, 2017.
So everybody understands that. Thank you very much. Number five, which was tabled for a staff report, which will be forthcoming. Number six, councillor Arnold.
Madam Warden, motion number six, I didn't understand how that happened in a committee when council has made a motion. There's no reconsideration motion, and that's exactly what this motion is doing at the committee level. And I don't understand how that can take place. Once a motion is duly passed by this council, it is to be acted upon, and no committee has the right to overturn direction from this council. So I would suggest that that motion be struck from the minutes, and then we go back and deal with motion number five that has been tabled. And I would like a recorded vote on motion number five if it's the will of this council to remove motion six from the minutes, because it is not a legal motion.
So we have noted that number... Councillor Arnold.
Madam Warden, if I may, I will make a motion that number six is an illegal motion, it should be struck from the committee minutes, because that would normally be a reconsideration that would have to take place in this chamber.
For the motion, I defer to Mayor Arnold's procedural point there on the first part. I would ask the second part stand, which is just a general policy on our involvement in these issues. Like, that's why that is there. It came out of that discussion, but it's really a general, with respect to setting speed limits, let's just take a good look at what our responsibilities are. That's a different part?
That makes sense. That should be the number six motion.
Okay, so I'll support councillor's motion if that's left in place.
So if I'm understanding that correctly, we are striking A, but we're leaving B stand for a staff report with six. All in favour of that? Opposed? Carried. Now, you wanted a recorded vote, did you, councillor Arnold?
The recorded vote I'd like is on the tabling motion from number five, which just delineates what we had asked staff to do in regards to Oil City. So I'd like a recorded vote on the tabled motion, and if that fails, then I think what we should do is go back and readdress it.
Madam Warden, what are we doing here? What are we voting for or voting against? Or am I just confused?
I'll turn back to councillor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden McDougall. On motion number five, it's actually tabling a recommendation from staff, and I am asking for a recorded vote whether we're going to table it or not. And it depends on what's the outcome of that vote will be the next motion.
Do we get a second there?
So it's like any other motion that comes forward, we have the right to ask for a recorded vote on the outcome at the committee level. And so I'm asking for a recorded vote that whether we agree as county council that this should be tabled or not.
Is there a second or for that motion? Councillor Arnold.
Madam Warden, the motion's already there, I'm asking for a recorded vote on that. Do I need to make a motion to have a recorded vote? Because you already have the motion in place. My understanding was that you would just call the question like you normally would, because you're calling the question each time you go through a number. So you're calling this question, and I ask for a recorded vote on the question.
So everyone is ready then for a recorded vote? Mr. Cribs.
The randomiser selected councillor Case.
Yes.
Councillor Cook. Councillor Gillant.
Yes.
Councillor Gillis. Councillor Hand.
Yes.
Warden McDougall.
Yes.
Councillor Marriott.
Yes.
Councillor McCharles.
Yes.
Councillor McGugan.
Yes.
Councillor Napper.
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Warden Veen.
No.
Councillor Weaver.
Yes.
Councillor Arnold.
Councillor Lewis Lee-Mon.
That's no. Councillor Bushy.
Yes.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Broad.
Yes.
And councillor Bruzwick.
Yes.
That will carry by 33 to 4.
And could I get you to review, just as a statement for council, as this stands at this point, Mr. Cribs, then?
Well, you've lifted, or sorry, you've addressed item five specifically, there was a motion to table, and you've affirmed the tabling of it. No, sorry, you've actually done the reverse of that. So now it's open to any further motion, if councillor Arnold is, or anyone else is so inclined.
Turn that back to you then, councillor Arnold.
Well, motion is, I understood that if you voted yes, then you tabled this motion. Is that not correct? So we lost that to do anything with this motion. But what I'm going to ask you, Warden McDougall, is what do we do now? We had a motion that was approved here to go ahead and put the signs up. Now all we got is, this recommendation came from staff, the numbers of how many metres it is away from where it is, which it all is the bylaw. So now what are we going to do? I guess I'm confused as to what direction council wants to take at this point, because as it is now, we have a motion from November saying that we are going to drop the speed limit to 50K. Now we've tabled where the signs go. So maybe somebody a lot sharper than me knows what needs to be done now.
I will note from the committee discussion, councillor Arnold, that there was, in the content of the debate that morning and discussion, some questions around the mapping as to where the location of the signing would be, and the absence of a staff report towards the decision in the first place. And as I make my recollection of that meeting, that's why this was tabled for the purpose of turning back to staff on the mapping and the issue of signage, and that was the purpose then of item six. Now, I could ask Mr. Cole if he could clarify if I've got that correct or not.
Madam Warden, the report that was brought back did demonstrate the proposed locations of those speed limit changes and the transition zones to that effect. At the meeting, my understanding is that the committee decided not to proceed with that at that time to confirm that the speed limits that were set were the appropriate speed limits.
Follow-up then, thank you. Councillor Arnold.
And madam Warden, that's when I go back to saying that the committee cannot do anything with a motion that's passed by this chamber unless there's a reconsideration of that in this chamber. And that's what in fact even number six is doing, because the original motion from October, it delineated already where those signs were supposed to go. All the report did that Mr. Cole had brought back to this committee was just put a number of metres on the exact same thing that this council chamber had passed. So to me, I don't understand, and that's where I'm asking you, you were there and you were involved in this process, so I'm asking you... So I'm asking you, what was the reasoning behind this when you already had the motion? You were, we were already told where to put the signs. Mr. Cole brought back the numbers for the bylaw, which reflected exactly what the motion was from October, passed in the November meeting. And now, all of a sudden, we got the committee trying to do a reconsideration motion, which they didn't do. They just made the motion to table stuff. So there's a procedural something wrong here. Do you understand what I'm saying, Madam Warden?
Yes, I do. And I, in my recollection of the committee meeting, recall the discussion of its members around the absence of a staff report and their desire to have a staff report, which was absent from that meeting before proceeding. They took some action, which you've questioned here today because council had already provided that direction. And now with number six, we're only going to get a staff report now to general policy around this moving forward. Does that help you?
No, because you're still dealing with a motion that's not a legal motion because you're doing a reconsideration. We've tabled the stuff there, and I believe that the only proper thing to do now would be for someone in this chamber to make a motion to do a reconsideration of what was already passed in this chamber. I think that's the next step procedurally that we need to take if that is so desired.
Counsel Weber.
Thank you. I think very much amount of confusion here on what we voted for. I believed I was voting to have the motion passed, not tabled, when we voted yes from the earlier motion. And I see some heads nodding to that. So I think we did pass the motion that council originally put forth. At the committee meeting, there was asking for clarification. The motion was not changed by the committee. The motion was deferred and put down for further information. So the motion was still a valid motion. Therefore, I don't believe it was a reconsideration, but that can be debated. Item B of the report in motion six is the real reason that there was discussion and where that was tabled because we wanted, what is the actual policy on the process for developing changing speed limit signs, proper notification on that. So that's, that was the underlying reason for the tabling was to make sure that we had a policy so we followed it through the process. So I don't know how we go back to do a reconsideration, but I believe that the recorded vote, people thought that we were passing the original motion. And I, so I... Of what the, the motion says, that was presented by council and, or presented by the committee to this council, passed by this council, sent to the committee, that was tabled. I think the vote that we had here was for it to be passed, not kept on the table.
Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think, then, we need to roll back the hands of time, and everybody needs to understand that what was voted on was to table that item six because it says right there, motion tabled. And I asked for a recorded vote on the tabling motion, not the meat of the motion, but the tabling of that motion because that's all we can vote on in here without introducing a new motion, which would go back, because you have to deal with your tabling motion first, and then you go back and deal with it if it doesn't get tabled or not. That's why I voted against tabling the motion because I wanted to go back and implement. So if there's confusion, Madam Warden, I'll leave it to the chair to decide how to move forward. If there was so many people in here that thought they were voting for the meat of motion six, I think we need to have a revote. And the first thing that has to be done is a revote on the tabling motion. And once that is dealt with, then we go ahead and we can make another motion, if that be the will of this chamber. It's not up to me to do it because I didn't vote for it.
Counsel Arnold, or Counsel Bradley, sorry.
A vote was held. Why people voted the way they did, yes or no, doesn't matter. So let's continue the fun. To open that discussion today would take a reconsideration and a two-thirds votes of this chamber to do so. I would plead with you to do that. And we can get back and, I applaud Mr. Mayor Arnold's correct on what happened at the committee. I don't think that was an issue at the committee. We just had a further discussion that broadened the discussion, and someone said, well, let's just take a look at these options. So just to clear this up, I will move that we reconsider the previous vote, and hopefully we get a two-thirds majority to do that, and then we'll start again.
All in favor? Hands high. Counsel Napper.
Yeah, I don't want to be confused here anymore either. So if we vote to say yes to this, then we'll be bringing back the original motion that the lady who took up petition and presented to county council, fifty kilometers an hour through Oil City.
Yes, that's correct.
Will that motion be made today, or?
Yes. Your first, your first vote here this morning that requires a two-thirds vote is to reconsider this, the tabling motion at this meeting today. Okay. All in favor? Hands high. Opposed?
I abstain.
That motion is carried by a two-thirds vote. Now, we'll go back to the Counsel Arnold.
Well, thank you, Warden McDougall. I would like to move motion number five, that the numbers that are in place and the bylaw be passed as per the recommendation to the committee.
Is there a second or for that motion? Counsel Gilliland. Discussion. Counsel Gillis.
Yes, I'm probably a brave person to weigh into this. But the one thing, the confusion that was at the AM Committee with regard to this was as a result of the fact that previous, in previous meetings, no report was asked for with how to actually implement, and that's where the problem lied. So Counsel Bradley is quite correct. It wasn't in the actual spirit or meat of the motion, it was how to implement the motion. And this particular one was going ahead without a staff report because we thought it was pretty clear-cut. But as, as the conversation carried on, it wasn't as clear-cut as we originally thought. So with that in mind, and if you want the bylaw passed, if you want this motion passed with the bylaw, how is that going to affect the implementation? Because that's where the problem lied. Leia, I should say, sorry.
Mr. Cole, can you help us with that, please?
Well, I think what we're sitting with is, is a set of recommendations that had come out of the original, the original motion to implement the fifty kilometer an hour speed limit. And what staff was asked to do was determine the limits of that and, and the parameters around that, around establishing that speed limit. And that's what staff came back with, was, was the, the locations of those zones that would be required to implement that fifty kilometers an hour. As, as we sit here now, now that, as I understand, we, the tabling motion has been lifted, then I believe that that is exactly what we can discuss here according to those recommendations. And just, I don't think everybody has the direct report in front of them probably at this stage, but, but the fifty kilometer an hour zone was set to the existing seventy kilometer an hour zone within Oil City, and there were speed zones of seventy kilometers an hour set at either end of that fifty kilometer an hour zone. And they were approximately 500 meters long, which is consistent with many other locations that we've established in the county. So I believe that there is a method to implement that. We, we have assessed that based on council's recommendations to, to establish a fifty kilometer an hour zone, and if, if council decided, directed us to proceed, then we would proceed based on those actions, barring, barring other discussion.
Deputy Warden Veen.
Thank you, Madam Warden and members of county council. I guess I was the one that caused this problem. The point I was trying to make is we're slowing the traffic down through Oil City to fifty kilometers an hour. We moved it back so we're almost a half a kilometer on either side of Oil City. Well, we only got probably a mile, mile and a half in between Oil City and Oil Springs, and we have a seventy zone outside of Oil Springs. So if we're going to do this, we might as well just lower the speed limit to fifty all the way down the road until we get past Oil Springs because it makes no sense to slow the traffic down that much on a major thoroughfare in our county. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Okay, I will call the vote on the motion, then. To read, pardon me? Are you clear that we're, that we're voting on A, B, C? Yes? Yes, Deputy Warden Veen is calling for a recorded vote. Okay. All in favor? Oh, no, sorry. Mr. Cribbs, could you activate your randomizer there, please?
With pleasure, Warden. Just take us a minute here. All right, the randomizer selected Counsel Gillis. Counsel Hand. Warden McDougall.
Yes.
Counsel Marriott.
Yes.
Counsel McCharles. Counsel McGugan.
Yes.
Counsel Napper. Counsel Veen. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Arnold.
Yes.
Counsel Bushy.
Yes.
Counsel Bradley. Counsel Broad.
Yes.
Counsel Brusowicz.
Yes.
Counsel Case.
Yes.
Counsel Cook. And Counsel Gilliland.
Yes.
That will carry thirty-six to one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cribbs. So moving through number six now, we're just with B left on the table. We'll be looking for a staff report around general policy moving forward. Moving through the rest of the committee minutes, number seven. Oh, sorry. Counsel Gilliland.
I thought you were going to run through there, Madam Warden. I want to speak to this motion. On September the 7th, one of our residents of St. Clair Township sent a letter to our township council, and it had reference to safety and speed on Kimball Road. And since it was a county road, we referred it on to the county, our clerk referred it on. And I was so disappointed to see that it was, it was turned down. And what the letter spoke to was safety of children, children being picked up on the school bus. Now, you have to understand, this area is a built-up area. There are several houses between Rokeby and Petroya Line. And I was just so disappointed to see that this was turned down. It was like it was dismissed. The words were, "are not warranted in this application." I need to understand why it were not warranted, and if I can't understand that, I'm certainly going to vote against this, and I'll ask for a recorded vote. Thank you.
So again, the, well, Counsel Weber, do you wish to speak to this as committee chair since it was your meeting?
As the report was received, it was the will of the committee that made this decision.
Thank you, Counsel, or Chair Weber. And I would also note that it wasn't, in my impression, Counsel Gilliland, that it was dismissed out of hand, rather that at the committee level, there is, as you know, always a discussion about warrants, and when you hit that threshold, and that caused the committee to vote as it did. Counsel Gilliland, follow-up.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Item B speaks to the warning signs. It's all it's asking for, additional warning signs. It was not warranted in this application. When I drive down the road, I see signs say, "No engine brakes." Is that more important than a sign to protect a child? You know, this is what I'm saying. If, if signs are a problem, get rid of that sign then because it doesn't, is meaningless. Thank you.
So am I understanding, then, Counsel Gilliland, that you're looking to pull this one out as a recorded vote as well? Okay. Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, Madam Warden, members of county council. I would like to defer to Mr. Cole on this one with regard to the signage. Could that, could you change the signage to reflect children at play? Or we have various signs that, that speak to, give people ample warning that these children are in that area, or families are in that area, or there are senior citizens in that area. We do have that signage, and could that be added without over-signaging the place?
Mr. Cole.
So there's a couple of aspects that, that, under consideration here, and now, now with that new sign, the children at play, I'll speak to that one first. Typically, children at play signs are reserved for areas where there are high volumes of children accessing facilities such as playgrounds and, and that type of, that type of area. They are not typically used for individual residential areas. If they were, we would be putting them up in, along every road in every city. So that, in that case, I do not think that a children at play sign is appropriate in this circumstance. The, the sign that was referred to in the report, the report and that was reviewed, was a school bus stopping ahead sign. There, there are guidelines and warrants that we look to, to establish where those signs are warranted and required. They typically deal with visibility issues along roadways. Where you can see a school bus stop, and, and it is, those signs are meant to make motorists aware of unexpected stopped school buses ahead where they cannot see them. And in this case, we have a clear visibility on, it's, it's, there is a jog at that location, but it in no way inhibits the visibility along that roadway. Motorists can see the flashing lights, they can see the stop signs, they are required to stop by law. So in this case, we did not feel that that was an appropriate use. And, and we do talk to the school bus, the organizers when we consider these, and it was their opinion as well that that was not, that was not a warranted case.
Before I call for the Counsel's request for a recorded vote, Counsel Case.
Madam Warden, I guess through you back to Mr. Cole. I guess I look at this, this is an issue of, obviously, the residents in that area have asked for this consideration because they feel there is an issue. And I guess from my standpoint, I understand what you said, and you talk about the precedent around some of these things. But when there's an issue and the residents have asked for consideration for signage, and if it's deemed to be overprotective, I'm kind of okay with that as a counselor. Because when I look at it, there's individuals down there that obviously are concerned. Counsel Gilliland's made some very good points, and as far as I'm concerned, to have one or two extra signs, or three extra signs on a road when it's been requested, is not a big price take for us to pay. So I understand what you're saying from your standpoint, and, you know what I mean, and all that. But from my standpoint, I think if a person asks for a couple extra signs, and obviously there's a rationale around asking for that, nobody just came up with that idea, I think it's something we should look at. it's something we should look at as a county council and consider. So that's just my point, Madam Warden. Thank you.
Okay, so the counselor has, if I'm understanding this correctly, from what Counsel Gilliland said, at the very least, he wanted signs. So from this chair, I'm gonna recognize that what Counsel Gilliland would then be asking for is a recorded vote on the addition of signage to, at a minimum, protect the children. Is that correct, Counsel Gilliland?
Yes, and I just, I don't want to be emotional about this thing, but I don't want to see some child hurt or some casualty out there, and then come back to County Council and say, "You had a chance to do something, and you declined." So on the recorded vote, if it were to fail, I'm sure that we'll get another motion to replace it after, if it were to fail. Thank you.
Counsel Broad.
Just a clarification then. Are you, you're not worried about 7A? It's 7B that you're concerned about, Peter?
Counsel Gilliland.
7B was the most important to me. I realize that it's a, it's a county road, it's a paved road, 80 kilometers isn't so fast. All they asked for was a warning sign for their children waiting for buses. And that's what they do, they wait at the road for the buses. So I'd like to see this motion fail.
As it sits?
As it sits.
And then you want to make a second motion?
Yes.
Around signage?
Broad?
So if this motion fails, and the 80 kilometer per hour maintained by the county also fails? Just B? Just so I got clarification.
So the issue before us now is a recorded vote on 7B only. Okay? You wish to speak to that, Counsel Arnold?
Well, you have 7A to deal with, Madam Warden, so I would suggest you split that motion and have two votes then.
Two recorded votes? Is that what your wish is? Oh, okay, just a vote on 7A then. As it reads, all in favor. Hands high, please. Yes. Opposed? That motion is carried. Now I'm moving on to 7B, which is to place some signage in this area for the protection of the children. No? Isolation of signage. Okay, so you want B to fail. Okay, sorry about that. 7B then, as it reads here right now. All in favor? Oh, recorded? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Cribs.
Our randomizer has, will select... Oh, Counsel Brusowicz. Counsel Case. Counsel Cook. Counsel Gilliland. Counsel Gillis. Counsel Hand. Warden McDougall.
No.
Counsel Marriott. Counsel McCharles. Counsel McGugan. Counsel Napper. Deputy Warden Veen. Counsel Weaver. Counsel Arnold. Counsel Bushy. Counsel Bradley. And Counsel Broad. That's defeated.
Thank you, Mr. Cribs. Now, Counsel Gilliland, you wish to make a motion?
I would like to move that we place signs on the residential area on this Kimball Road, and they don't have to be children at play. I would say waiting for bus signs is, would be appropriate. And I'll leave it up to our staff people to decide where those signs should be, because, you know... So waiting for bus signs.
Seconded by Counsel Gillis. I will confirm with Mr. Cole that there's some form of signage that can address waiting for buses, school bus loading zone, or something?
I am not, off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any signage that reflects that. So we would need to investigate and determine what type of signage exactly would meet the needs of the motion being brought forward here.
So Counsel Gilliland, would you like for that to come back to committee for a report, or do you just want some form of signage up there?
They don't have to be specifically waiting for a bus. It could be words that make reference to children waiting for their school bus. I mean, there's gotta be a sign that says something like that.
Mr. Cole?
Counselor, I'm sorry, but in my experience, over the last almost 20 years now of roadway engineering, I have not encountered a sign that specifically says that. If you want us to create a sign, if the intent of this council is for us to create a sign to reflect a need that's specific to our county, I'm happy to go ahead and do that. And I believe we can do that on the direction here. And if there's, and if there's, it's two signs. So if what we decide to install is not to council's liking, I'm sure that two signs and making new ones is not gonna break the bank. So we can proceed with that motion here, develop something, install it, and if that's not, if council isn't happy with that, we'll reconsider that, and we can come back with more specific direction.
I will recognize Counsel Weaver and then Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Warden. You drive around the country and you see places that are designated as community safety zones, and speeding fines are doubled, and that brings an awareness to traffic in the area. I would suggest that maybe this is one of those areas that should have the community safety zone. And I would, I don't know whether the mover would consider something like that. It's a, it's a sign we have it on different places that with enforcement does keep people, gives people a recognition that there is issues with pedestrians. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Counsel Weaver. Mr. Cole, is there any requirements that are attached to community safety zones that have to be met? Or can that sign be used at your discretion to install signage that would be familiar at least to our driving public?
Through you, Madam Warden. We have looked at community safety zones before in very specific situations. We have tended not to use those at the county. I would have to come back with the exact reasons as to why or what warrants. I don't have those at my fingertips.
Okay, I'm reading then, if it was going to be a community safety zone sign, we would need to have Mr. Cole investigate and come back. As the motion stands right now, the mover is looking for protective signage that protects the children and residents of that area. And Mr. Cole has expressed that he's willing to create a special purpose sign on the direction of council through its vote. And I think that's probably a reasonable, a reasonably fair approach to avoid further reporting and delay of this issue. I will recognize Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Warden. If we look on page 241 of the committee minutes, sign review, and it's exactly what Counsel Gilliland's asking for, the school bus stop ahead warning signage is utilized and indicated to drivers that they are approaching a school bus stop, and I think that's what he's looking for in that location. Location which Mr. Cole, if he could look for us to see exactly where that should be, and that's all it needs to go up there. We don't need to have community safety zones, we don't need the rest of that stuff. All it is, is exactly what is in the report, that was recommended against putting up, let's put it up. And I believe that would deal with what Counsel Gilliland's looking for.
Thank you, Counsel Arnold. So does everyone understand what we're voting on now? All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you. Number eight? Nine? 10? 11? 12? 13? 14? 15? And the motion to adjourn, number 16. Committee Chair Weaver.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I would be pleased to move the adoption of this report as amended, and it has been a pleasure to be chair of the PM Committee for this preceding year. Thank you.
Look for a seconder for that. Seconded by Counsel Arnold. Thank you, Counsel. All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Moving on now to the afternoon committee. We'll turn it over to its chair, Counsel McCharles.
Thank you, Warden McDougall, members of County Council. The afternoon committee met on November the 16th, and there was very little controversy. And I present the minutes for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Item one? Two? Three? Four? Five? Six? Seven? Eight? Nine? 10? 11? 12? 13, 14, and 15 was dealt within camera. 16? 17? Back to you, Counsel McCharles.
Thank you, Warden McDougall, and I would move the adoption of this day's minutes. And it also was a pleasure to serve as the chair of this committee. Lovely bunch of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Committee Chair, Counsel McCharles. Seconded by Counsel Broad. All in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have items tabled from previous meetings, which was a report. I would, I believe that we set that aside so people could have a chance to review that report. How would council like to deal with that? I think you initiated that, did you, Counsel Arnold? Okay. Is there a seconder for the lifting motion? Counsel McGugan. All in favor of the lifting motion? Opposed? That's carried. And I'll come back to you then on the main motion, Counsel Arnold? Do we need to, or no? Okay, thank you very much then. So on this report, I'm looking then for a mover. Counsel McGugan? Seconded by? Counsel Marriott? Any discussion? Counsel McGugan?
Yeah, Madam Warden, members of County Council, I believe I was the one that brought this up at the last meeting, and Counsel Arnold had a great idea that we should go back and take a look and review it. I did go to the session that was held near Windsor, and yeah, I realized there were some glitches in it, but I also realized there's 1% there that eventually would filter down some of it to us at the local level. Now, there's no amount designated if this even happens. This is just a review of seeing where we could go. So I will be voting in favor of it. It may not be perfect.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? I, let's call that again. All in favor? Hands high? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much. See no notice of motion? Other business? I first would like to draw Counsel... Oh, all right, I'll recognize others first. Counsel Gillis, McGugan, and Bradley. Go ahead, Counsel Gillis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give a brief update. I will give a longer report in the new year with regard to FCM advocacy days, which I attended last week, for the entire week. There were 120 board members that spoke to 200 members of the government on both sides, all sides of the table, including senators that have been newly appointed. The main theme that we were talking about was about the Phase 2 infrastructure design and the delivery of that. One of the things that we are pressing for is that the federal government stay committed to their 50%, with a variation of the theme from the provincials, provincial associations. So what we were targeting for was 50% fed, 33% provincial, and 17% for municipal. We were also advocating for social housing and the importance of good affordable housing, but not just new stock, but to reinvest monies in the old stock. There was great discussion over the Infrastructure Bank, and I will bring more information about that. The total sum that's been allocated to infrastructure renewal is $81 billion over 11 years. $15 billion of that is for the Infrastructure Bank, and there's going to be specifics around that. The other thing, though, I really wanted to highlight as well, because I'm vice chair of the Infrastructure Committee, was our discussion around rail safety, but also around rail crossings. And there has been $55 million put into updating all the rail crossings across Canada. And with the members of the Infrastructure Committee, that was recognized as being woefully inadequate, considering the number of rail crossings we have, particularly in the rural area. There is going to be a data collection and study done, and the new regulations and standards are going to be in force, as we understand it, in 2021. So we are continuing with that advocacy, because as was stated by many members of the rural community in the Rural Caucus, but also by the Infrastructure Chair themselves, who is, who lives in Langley, BC, it's just not enough money. So we're going to be continuing on with that, and I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you very much, Counsel Gillis. Counsel McGugan?
Well, that's all right. I just want to thank Counsel Gillis for her participation in those committees. It's great work. And I'm just wondering if she would be able to get someone to come to this chamber and speak about rail safety. There's a real concern around tankers out on the road or out on the rails, and also in regards to the crossings. And just to see what they are doing and give us a public presentation in regards to that. So that's my request back to Counsel Gillis. And I do, Enri, you've done a super job in your position there, and I appreciate the work that you've done there. So if we could do that, I think it'd be a benefit to all the county to hear that. We're all crisscrossed with hazardous materials crossing through our municipalities, so...
Thank you, Counsel Arnold. Yes, I can give you some, a little more information with that regard. There are new regulations that are being put in place as a result of the advocacy work by Madame Quinlan from Quebec. She is the chair of the Rail Safety Committee. But also, you asked me prior to, with regard to pipelines in that particular committee that I was on as well. And there are, we're continuing that work, but I will certainly try to get someone here that can speak to rail safety. And it would, to me, it would be probably very, very good to, for me to speak to Madame Quinlan in Quebec first, to get her advice, because the message that we are delivering, I want it to be cohesive and understandable to everyone, because it's going to set the stage for Cross Canada.
Thank you very much, Counsel Gillis. So we'll leave that to, leave that to you to deal with, and I'll turn over now to Counsel McGugan.
Thank you, Madam Warden, members of County Council. First, I've got two things. One first, thanks for your efforts. One, first, thanks for your efforts over the last two years. I realize there's been some rocky times, but you got through, and I say thanks for visiting the rural municipalities as many times as you did. My question is, where do we stand on the gateway sign as we wrap up another year, and when will we expect to see it?
Thank you for your question, councillor McGugan. Mr Cole's prepared to speak to the gateway sign.
Through you, Madam Warden. Councillor, the gateway sign, we did, we have, we have initiated property acquisition. I will tell you that it did not go as smoothly as I was hoping that it would go. However, I think we're at a position where we'll be coming back to council shortly with some approvals for the arrangements, and that will allow us to have some concrete land in order to, in order to proceed with that project. In addition to that, we did apply earlier in the year for some additional funding, and we are waiting to hear whether or not we're successful on that funding application. And so the last part of that question, then, was, I would very much like to see that sign constructed and done with, within the next year.
Thank you, Mr Cole, for your update report. I will recognize councillor Bradley, and then councillor Veen, or deputy warden Veen.
Yes, there was a resolution that went out to county council the other day, ready to rule school closings, and looking for endorsement. And I don't have it in front of me, but I believe you all received it. Okay? I would just move that we endorse this resolution.
Seconded by councillor Weaver? Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, councillor Bradley. Deputy Warden Veen?
Thank you, Madam Warden, and members of county council. It's been a great two years as serving as deputy warden, and it's, it's been a pleasure, Beth. And you've kept me busy, which I appreciate. But most of all, I would like to thank county council for their support, and I'm honored that I had the two years as deputy warden, and I look forward to the future. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any other business? Okay, moving on, then, to a couple of things that I have. First of all, I will draw council to your attention to a Healthy Kids Community Challenge to Lampton Partners. Nicole Boyer is the person who has been in charge of this program. She is inviting us to stay after the meeting, those who are interested, with your pledge cards placed in front of you. She is looking for us to have a group photo that we're supporting the Healthy Kids Challenge around to choose water first, which is certainly a good initiative. Secondly, I too wish to thank members of council for the privilege of leadership over the past two years. I have enjoyed enormously my time spent in communities, around parades, around festivities, around special celebrations, and at times dealing with difficult issues. I most particularly am very proud that we were able, as Western Wardens, to move forward with the SWIFT project. We are now in the throes of moving forward in the first steps of regional economic development, which was taken on by Western Wardens, to carry on where the Southwestern Economic Alliance left off. I'm also very pleased to report to you that there were representatives from the urban mayor's group at the forum that Mr Van Horn and I attended yesterday. It was very well attended. There are other sessions that is, that are gathering up input, along with some special meetings, individual meetings that they're having with individual economic development people. So that is going to bode well for our area, and I believe that is a very, very good initiative. I also want to draw your attention to the fact that in lieu of placing gifts in front of each of you today for my appreciation for the support you have provided over the last two years, I've picked up on a new tradition that was started by my colleague, councillor Case, and I have made a personal donation in your name to the Arts Council of East Lampton for their creative roadshow program that I chose, because it is mobile, it's with supplies that this group is taking out to communities. And in interest of some conversations over the last two years, where council expressed a desire that artistic programming would get out into the rural areas, that's where I put that donation, in the name of each of you. And finally, as I close up my term, I'm also here to tell you that I'm going to be joining my trusted colleagues, councillor Weaver and councillor Veen, in a bid for warden for 2017-18. And with that, I'm going to turn this back over to Mr Cribs for bylaws, please.
Thank you, Warden. There's a motion by councillor Broad, seconded by councillor Bradley, that bylaw number 30 of 2016 is circulated, be taken as read a first and second time.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Warden, there's also a motion that bylaw number 30 of 2016 is circulated, be taken as read a third time and finally passed. That's moved by councillor Brusowicz, and seconded by councillor Bushy.
All in favor? Opposed? That motion is also carried. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to the next regular meeting of county council to be held Wednesday, February 1st, 2017, with the in-camera session to commence at 9:00 a.m. in committee room three. Motion to adjourn. Councillor Hand, seconded by councillor Napper?
Yes, councillor Napper.
Sorry, go ahead.
Earlier, we said we're going to set up a committee to review this local official plan here?
Yes.
And come have it back. Do you think we should be doing that today, or?
That was the suggestion, that you would pick representatives?
Oh, next week.
Next week? We can do that between now and then. You can have some discussions, and those who want to participate will look after that next week. Okay? Okay. So we have a motion to adjourn, all in favor? That's carried.